... United States of America and to the quality for which it stands, one nation under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you for coming. Some of you are returning from last night at our final budget meeting. Thank you very much. We just have to stick around. Mr. Lacy, Hugh has been unbelievably dedicated to the village. Happens to live in the States, but still to live in the village. Twenty-eight years as on the Architectural Design Review Board. Target of much criticism for anybody who goes there and still volunteer here after year. So we want to thank you very much for lots of service. He's done the P O A meetings, he's run the A D R B, and he'll still be around. And we really appreciate it. We let you give him one of our fancy-spancy plaques here. I guess I'll read it quickly. "We are Village Garden City, whose board of trustees and mayor desires to represent us and the individuals in our community who have rendered significant contributions to the enhancement of our village and the maintenance of our residents. Whereas oftentimes there emerges an individual who has the ability, compassion, and dedication to effect its sound and lasting impact on professional and civil concerns with which they're involved. Such individual is Hugh Lacy, who has served as a member of the Architectural Design Review Board in the past twenty-eight years and most noteworthy, has been chairman of the Architectural Design Review Board for the past nine years plus. And has thus established himself as a man of accomplishment and commitment. He is assistant to village throughout his youth service and volunteerism to enforce our village building and zoning standards while also providing us with his knowledge and insight regarding changes being necessary or desirable. We wish to formally recognize his efforts to improve the quality of life of Garden City residents. Further thank you, Mr. Lacy, for many days and hours that he has dedicated as a volunteer." So, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you for the A D R B. You're retiring to Costa Rica with a great dinner bar. Thank you so much. Is anyone up there? Anyone like your family members? No? Okay. All right, thank you so much. Oh, sweet, sorry, Hugh. Again, thank you so much. I guess we move on to our regular portion of our meeting. We usually have our staff walk through a few of the items on our agenda, just to explain a few things to pretty light the agenda. Again, we finished off the budget for the most quiet last night. We worked out that in a week.
So, Mayor, Trustees, good evening. As per our usual customs, I will ask each department head to go through their area expertise here. On the first one, the village council, I'd like to assist the attorney P V on number four, the proposal for the police department. This is a chance for a fund contingent to fund a secondary swipe at the data for the police department analytics. As recall, publicly did an analysis of the data, collected it, and overview of police department by consultant from ICMA. And the data quality and the detailed data wasn't sufficient for them to make all recommendations they normally like to make. This board has decided back in the fall to go after a second swath of data. Now that the commissioner had put installed a computer-headed dispatch system, which is a model for police dispatch data. And we postponed that when the analysts went in online in January for about six months. This proposal approved tonight will allow us to encumber the funds this year and have the second study beginning as of June 1st.
Yes, Mr. Swasey, I agree. I think that explained it thoroughly with one note, which is that the board has directed that the report have the purpose of enabling our office as village council to better advise the village and the police department with respect to its operations and deployment. And for that reason, the report is first addressed to my office and its contents circulated to the board only as a matter of legal counsel. Is that correct, Mr. Swasey? This is as you said.
I would just add, because I know someone will start some rumors up there, we are not cutting police officers. That's not the point at all, and that's not where we're going. This is to help us be more efficient, more productive, figure out different ways to do things. That's all this is about. What else? Any others we need to cover? Peter, if you can.
While I have the microphone, right. While I have the microphone, yes, there's two other matters. One is the village has a license agreement with the Garden City Casino, under which they have been operating for some period of time. The last license agreement was dated in nineteen ninety-nine and runs through until May thirty-first of this year. There are deliberations that this board wishes to make concerning how and when and if and for what duration and what kind of use the board wants to engage for that property, which is actually owned by the village, whether it be to continue the arrangement, change the arrangement, however the board is going to decide. In order to give the board some time to deliberate on that, I was asked to draft an extension agreement for the existing license agreement that will now take us through to October thirtieth of two thousand and nineteen. The casino has consented to that and they have signed that arrangement. It also provides one other minor change, which allows this board to use the facility a number of times for village use, should the village wish to do so, between now and the expiration of these licenses. Finally, by May, item twelve A on the consent calendar authorizes the execution of an agreement with a pyrotechnical company for a fireworks display. And if the board consents, I would suggest that that item be replaced by a little bit of a broader resolution allowing the mayor not only to sign that contract, but such related permits, contracts, agreements, et cetera, as would be related to the centennial celebration within budgetary limitations, so that it would be resolved that the mayor and/or his designee be authorized to execute an agreement with Pyro Engineering Eighth P V A, Volt Five, in substantially the form now on file in draft with the village clerk for a fireworks display on May twenty-five, rain date, May twenty-six, at the ball field of the middle school in celebration of Garden City's centennial for a fee of fifteen thousand dollars, and to further execute such other related agreements, permits, and contracts for services or goods as are reasonably appropriate for the centennial celebration, all to be within budgetary limitations. And if the board unanimously consents, then we can substitute that item for item twelve A, and it could be then be named in that form on the consent calendar. Does the board so approve? unanimously consent, thank you.
Also, B is related to that, twelve B.
Twelve B is a facilities use agreement.
Between us and the school system.
Right, allowing us to use the middle school ball field for the fireworks display of May twenty-five.
Again, we've been Deputy Manager Bay, Karen, myself, lots of us, Kenny, we're fire department. We're just trying to keep it simple, but nice. You know, we'll do some fireworks with our band, we have some refreshments, food trucks, some rides. Not going to be like crazy extravaganza, but start around five-ish, four, five-ish on Saturday, hopefully doesn't rain, do fireworks, about eight-ish. Boom, simple. That's just the first of things we'll do during the year. So get the word out, get people to come. I know it's a holiday weekend, but that's the way it works, between having fields free and not used by all our sports teams. But you know, people go to their beach club or whatever, or the pool, they can come over at five o'clock and we'll have some ice cream trucks, et cetera. You know, it's simple, but it should be nice. Do little fireworks and go home. That's the goal. And we'll, again, we'll do other stuff the rest of the year. Anyways, so we wanted to get the fireworks, we didn't need to, but we wanted to do the fireworks across the street on the middle school. They'll set up there, that was the purpose of the arrangement with the school system. So we'll take care of the fields at the school system, we'll clean up everything, we'll take care of it.
And then I wanted to add on to that, Ben. We have a little lot that's going to happen between the months of April and October that bring to mind what the significance of the one hundred and fiftieth year anniversary and the one hundredth, one hundredth year anniversary. And one of the very nice things that we're doing is that in October, to sort of bring things down, we're going to have an interface faith service. And we've already made good plans with that, and we have a meeting to design how that will go. And then you will see really some very nice other things in the village. It would be very, very worthwhile to bring children to see it, so that they could get a feeling for the history of their village. And one of them is, I think we will have many, many old beautiful photographs on display in appropriate places in the village throughout those months that I mentioned to you. And we are also, I think, having celebration editions of our local newspapers, and also people writing articles about the history of our village from their unique perspective, hopefully about every two weeks from May to October. So it's a very, very nice idea. We're excited about it, and we hope that everybody will come and appreciate it.
Just to add to that, if the faith service will be October twentieth at three P M in the cathedral. The cathedral has volunteered again, as they did at the hundredth anniversary of Garden City. This is the anniversary of the incorporation of Garden City. And all of the religious facilities in the village have been invited. The letters to them only went out today, and I anticipate that all of them will be involved in that service. Obviously, all will be announced later on as we get closer to it. It's October twenty, three P M, Cathedral the Incarnation.
I think in addition to that, we should look to enhance our website and actually see if we can take some of these pictures and put them on the website and create a whole section just on the one hundredth year celebration.
I was trying to.
Marissa, there you go.
I was trying to actually get some people to come to that event on May twenty-fifth in Victorian attire and appropriate costumes. And I find that a lot of people in the village are too inhibited to do that. So I thought, all right, we'll try. And so I thought, okay, well then, we'll try the kids, you know? All of the P O As have ambassadors, and I had a thought like this. Actually, we became an incorporated village in nineteen nineteen, and a nineteen twenty-six Lindbergh flew the solo flight over the Atlantic to Paris. And I thought, wouldn't it be great to get someone in one of those leather flying outfits, with a leather helmet on and goggles and all this kind of carry-on? And I thought that would be a great thing for the, maybe some of the students from the high school, or ambassadors, or any student from the high school. Well, it's like pulling teeth, you know? So if you have a penchant for, you know, dressing up like Lindbergh, or you want to guarantee, it's the same thing about, we have parades. We have the Memorial Day Parade, we have the Belmont Festival, we have the fair at the Cathedral of the Incarnation, and we have other things. And we want to make a statement about those anniversaries at all of those events in a certain way. But, so I thought, if people put on period costumes and held a banner and just walked in the Memorial Day Parade, that that would be, you know, really very nice. So, I don't know. Think about it. But I think that it will be a very informative and interesting rest of the year. I hope that you enjoy it.
Go ahead, make them put their hands up. Take one step back. Okay, anything else we need to run to on the agenda? There's two items were related to some, I'll call it notable topics. One is the five-by-five Stewart Avenue. All we're doing is extending a timeframe. They had, when we first approved it, we're not revisiting the approval, that's done. It's just taking them, it's going to take them a while to get through planning and A D R B, et cetera. So that's an extension there. And then.
Just to be clear, Chuckie, approved is zoning change.
Yep.
I believe planning provisions at the Architecture Review Board, they have looked at it again since they've changed designs somewhat. Peter can answer. It's actually the original resolution of this board required them to obtain site plan approval by April tenth of this year, and is not at all unusual in projects of this size, that site plan undergoes various changes. There are architectural features, there are topological features that require changes in site plan. And accordingly, the applicant has asked for a six-month extension. The original board resolution contemplated that possibility and expressly said that this board is authorized to grant extensions, and they have asked to take advantage of that. So this resolution merely extends the time for them to obtain site plan approval. A not unexpected application.
The other thing is, St. Paul's, this is not an end-around anything. We are not building anything, we're not even close to building anything. This is just to help us from a budget viewpoint, do some stabilization planning work. That's all this is. There's no end-around. We're not starting building, we haven't decided what to do, we're months away from anything like that. So this is more like a budget thing. Like we did, we haven't actually passed resolutions yet, but in the budget, in a few weeks, with the firehouse on edge near, we may have to rebuild that. So eventually, if we do decide to do that, we probably will bond it. We're going to have upfront costs, again, for budgetary reasons, we're going to plan to do it as a bond eventually. That doesn't mean we end up doing it, but for budget purposes, you have to kind of plan ahead, give yourself the room to fold those costs into a bond later on. So that's the same kind of thing. And it's like the tax cap thing. You're just planning ahead in case you use it, you don't know if you're going to use it. We didn't use the tax cap levy, by the way. The tax levy is one point four eight, one point five five. We didn't even come close to the two. So all the rumors about, we were doing this to do that, and then doing end-around are once again unfounded.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to mention the issue of the appointment date for the chairperson of the A D R B?
Oh, yeah, I don't know what the hard copy. Under the village code, we would, because Mr. Lacy had decided to step down, we were going to replace his replacement, one of the current members of the A D R B. But the way the code works is you actually can't do it until we have our organizational meeting. So the members decided who they wanted to be the chairman. We were going to do it thinking we were just filling in vacant seats. We have to wait about two weeks. That's all.
Mayor, I'd like to follow up on your comments on St. Paul's. You are hundred percent correct. We're not building, we're not doing anything building-wise, it's months away. This board has already authorized four hundred thousand dollars for a planning and stabilization. This resolution has to be passed now, so that if at some point in time, we decide that we are going to move forward, the residents want to move forward with St. Paul's. We can include the costs that we have incurred now and may incur during the planning and stabilization process in that bond. If we don't take this action now, those costs cannot be bondable. It is very similar to the mayor said, as to the resolution that we passed, I think, a month and a half ago, having to do with the tax cap. We did it because of a potential emergency. We're way, way below the tax cap. So this is being done out of an abundance of caution, so that any funds that we have used as planning and stabilization can be included in any bond that we might have, might have, if the building that we planned moves forward. We are many months away from that.
Anything else? And a related item is actually picking a construction manager to help us figure out what to do in this initial phase. This is not to build, this is to help us plan out even simple things, how to save the windows, how to get access blocked, things like that. We've got to do some initial environmental, this is again, not to do the work, because a lot of that will have to do under bidding. So they come in and help us develop a plan, that's all this is. So, and then we interviewed all these in public, we had meetings with the three finalists, so that's all that.
We also said, or the engineers have said, that one of the things that we have to do is planning, pre-planning, is to take a look at the structure itself, to see whether it can, it could possibly support what we're thinking about planning to do. And if we can't do it, what's the cost that we have to move forward? Add to the cost, it may be a high enough cost, but we can't move forward at all. So this all goes to the planning stage and the stabilization stage only.
Yeah, I was just guessing, Mrs. Wu, are you going to give us a kind of an overview of where we ended up on the budget?
So at last night's final budget meeting, we've been over all the proposed changes that came up during all the budget work sessions, and there were two additional minor items that were added to the budget. With that, our final proposed budget comes to sixty-five million, five hundred and nine thousand dollars, of which three million, four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is related to work that will be reimbursed. So our net increase, our net budget, proposed budget after those reimbursements is sixty-two million, twenty-two thousand dollars. This represents a one point four one percent increase over the prior year's adopted budget.
One point four percent.
One point four percent. That budget is being funded by a current surplus of one million, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, estimated revenues of nine million, eighty-three thousand. And so that leaves us with a tax levy of fifty-one million, three hundred and forty thousand dollars. This represents a one point five five percent tax levy over the prior year.
So, and again, your individual tax will not equal one point five five, maybe a little bit less, maybe a little bit more, it all depends on your house and what work you've done, et cetera. That's the general number.
Mrs. Wu, a question, a lot of people think that when you look at a municipality, the tax cap is just simply just two percent. But our tax cap was actually higher than that, wasn't it?
That's correct.
But there's a formula, if you could maybe just explain it.
Sure. The tax cap levy formula is based on two components. The first component is the inflationary factor, and that's what's typically called the two percent cap, because the factor is either what the inflationary factor is determined by your state comptroller's office for the fiscal year, or two percent, whichever is lower. For the nineteen twenty fiscal year, the inflationary factor was determined to be two point four six percent, but they limited us to two percent, of course, that's what the law will assume. So that's one factor. The second factor is provided by the New York State Department of Taxation and Finance, and that's related to your real estate, your assessments for the village, and they give you a factor to allow for changes in taxable properties. And so that factor for the village was one point three seven percent. So in total, the village could have raised taxes three point three seven percent.
And still been compliant.
And still been tax cap compliant. And there's a third factor, which is, you know, any amounts not raised the prior years, there's a portion of that that carries forward to the next fiscal year. And since the village has not raised taxes to the whole tax cap amount in the last four years, a portion of those excess, you know, tax levy amounts carried forward. So the village had this year about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of additional funds it could have raised, and still not pierced the tax cap. So, you know, the village for this nineteen twenty proposed budget is well, well below the allowable tax cap.
And I just wanted to acknowledge to you, the department, our working department heads, that I am sure in my part that we would never be there without the efforts of your department and the local super department. One other thing I just wanted to mention, just to put things in perspective, if you now take the one point four one increase this year, and if you paid it up the last four years before that, so over the last five years, our taxes in the village have gone up in average of one point two seven percent. And I feel pretty comfortable to say you could take that, I think, and compare that against anyone else. I think that's a very good accomplishment, and thank you, Mrs. Wu, for helping us get there.
Thank you. Thank you to the board and all the department heads who worked very hard on this budget as we work. No, this has been arduous, six months, six-month process, but it always comes up.
We do this all year. I know people think we don't do it. We do this all year. And there are very tough questions and situations we have to find our way out of, and many times we're boxed in, because we're a municipality, we're subject to a lot of rules and regulations, and union contracts, and all sorts of stuff. So, and personnel is sixty, seventy percent of our cost. So we work real hard, and the board does a great job, and the staff does a great job. Is everything perfect? Of course not. But we do work very hard to keep us in a good place. We try to maintain some level of surplus, so we have flexibility in tougher years, or we want to do extra things, and that's what we try and do. So I think, quite frankly, this board, higher boards and staff deserve a lot of credit, much more than we'll ever get on the public. So, but thank you, I say to you.
And the truth is, right, at this point, you've picked a lot of the line for, right, and so I think it's going to get harder and harder year over year, I feel, to get to that level.
And there are things that are impacting us. You saw in the paper in the last week, there's a proposed bill in the New York State Legislature about prevailing wage, it's going to expand its impact on villages like us, and make things even more expensive to build and get done. That has nothing to do with us. We're not approving it, we're not asked, okay. We actually asked our state legislator before that even came out in the paper. We told them, you got to get rid of this, this is killing places like this, for no reason. I think this is hard, to do a bathroom. Instead of a bathroom costing eighty thousand dollars, it costs a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's what we have to deal with. Anyway, speaking of bathrooms, Kevin, are we in good shape on that? Are we in good shape on that, St. Paul's?
It's not an agenda, but we're moving along there. Wall tile will be going up, and we're getting good coordination of the contracts.
When do you expect the dolp, Kevin? Roughly?
Probably a week and a half.
We have, I'm in touch with our contractor, our venture engineer from Cameron Engineering, who makes the electric side business assets of Kevin's team. The ladies room and the floors have completed, the tile on the walls and ladies room started today, all the upper walls are done on both sides, all the plumbing is done, I assume electric as well. But the one thing that's, might delay a bit is partitions, which are, which we're expecting April tenth, we have it, it might come up a week soon, so we're hoping early next week.
Anything else, generically, can we talk about?
Just, I'm on the field too, and I noticed that again, we have a little change here, how we do on the contingency.
We're good. Looking at a couple of other items that may be coming at the next board meeting, just getting finalized and some pricing. We're good with contingency, the electrical work that needed to be done is, I actually had to pre-pretty that.
Thank you.
It would get in, they'd get in around a ton, and pull the project back, so they did that. And we still have, we still have. Um, and we still have, we, we still have the balance. Actually looking at, uh, any one of the alternates we didn't originally, um, award for new felt poles, and, uh, we're looking at pricing for that eventually.
Are you really ready to start the secret?
That's the same. Now, it looks that way, they're getting a lot of comment every day.
Okay. Uh, any questions from the audience, or anything on the agenda? Yes, sir? Pablo, come on in, come on in.
Pablo, what are you through?
Uh, I'm actually here to help. Agenda round. Uh, I know in the papers and in the board meetings and, uh, we feel that you can still ask them for, let's say, resident input into things that affect the building and whatever. What I did is I read over every single thing that related to the central hall. So I have little studies of gas and so on, and I came up with a list, uh, renovations needed to stabilize and secure central hall's future development. And I have a list of about sixteen items on here, and I would like to pass that to you for, for consideration and evaluation in going forward, especially with engineering, uh, that these things really should be looked at and should be studied.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone? See, now, I guess we'll go to a group of minutes. We have a bunch of, uh, special meetings, oh, the budget, we waited. Uh, we have, uh, minutes from March seventh, two thousand nineteen, March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, March fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, the board meeting, or the assessment, I'm sorry, it was March fourteenth as well, and March twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, special meeting. Can I hear this as one giant resolution?
Yes, sir.
Trustee McQueen also makes that motion to approve this minute, seconded by trustee Blaney. All those in favor of approval of this minute? Oh, just as a note, uh, trustee Hyer had to be away this week, um, he went yesterday, the day before, but, uh, he's still involved, so before last, we miss him each once in a while.
If you're in the budget session by the whole of it, right?
Um, okay, so now we'll go to, uh, our new business, we're not going to have a brief conference with Mr. Hickey, I'll go left on that. And do the site plan extension as a separate item?
Yes, sir.
And to review the resolution, I want to hear it.
Well, the resolution is spread before the board. Uh, if you wish to do so, you certainly can, but on this item, it's just a question of a motion seconded as well.
McQueen also makes that motion, motion seconded by trustee Foley. All those in favor? Uh, and trustee, uh, over if you are, is a, is a, uh, a no, or is there anything we won't do?
No.
No, okay. Okay, now we move to our consent calendar. And again, a motion to approve the items on our consent calendar.
I'll make the motion.
Trustee Vito is on fire this evening to make a motion, seconded by trustee Foley. All those in favor of the, this, uh, consent calendar items? And we're not gonna stay, Wu. Thank you very much. Okay, so I guess we'll be moving to our work session. Yep. Um, this is a continuation of, uh, the prior conversations we had, what to do with, in this conversation, parking lot seven N. Some people have asked for us to segregate areas out, uh, the police, uh, also probably would benefit from having some segregated areas. We're moving slowly, as we often do. We are trying to get something done, so we apologize for our slowness. Um, so I think trustee Swazie created sort of survey here, so we get input.
Promoted or demoted, yes.
I'm sorry. I was a demotion.
Okay, I'm disagreeing with you.
I demoted you, sorry.
Mayor, trustees in public, so.
See, we, we, we take a lot of blame here, she doesn't.
Uh, at the last work session, um, we've been discussing, um, permit parking in the area seven N. Uh, for some of the apartment buildings, their condos do not have any parking on site. Uh, I believe sixty-seven Hilton is the, the only one that applies to. Uh, the last direction we had from the board was to put together a survey to see if there was interest, uh, and how much interest there was. Before we set off in on spaces, we would court it off and sign, shoot signage. And, um, so we put together, actually, uh, Gene Murray over in the commissioner's area, um, put together a questionnaire. We, we had drafted a couple of times, just so people know, this is, uh, just to, to, uh, show your interest. It's not commitment, uh, the price of commitment is not set yet. And we want to mail these with the stamps, so for the assembly back to us for people who check off the S and say, I'd be interested. So, um, send this to the board, circulate to the board, see if they wanted us to, uh, do any wordsmithing on it or add anything else. Um, we anticipate the way we have designed this, it is a two-step process. They would show interest. The board would then make the decision to do so and set a price. We go back and offer to them. It could be done such way where you set a price in advance, if you wish, and we do the, we do it one step process. This is the offer, and what comes back is a whole population of people.
Well, I think whatever, at least in my mind, I think whatever we do, whatever the amount is, you know, number space is a whole consideration too. It only works to me. We also have, get rid of the eight hour and do a segregated kinda, that's what we were talking about as well in that lot, right?
I don't know what you...
Excuse me, Paula? I'm the commissioner's talk person. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I believe that when we're gonna try to play and keep it somebody eight hours and maybe change some of the other time zones there, plus the, uh, the idea that permits will assist us, the enforcement will also, uh, if a lot of people are using that for railroad parking, we'll be able to, uh, have a better handle on stopping it.
Well, is the theory of the eight hour, 'cause we, is it the people who stores in restaurants, or is it? Because it doesn't seem you keep the eight hours for your charges and people, like, you wouldn't keep it for the residents, it would be, it would be for somebody else, huh?
You also have, uh, some of the people who work in the area, there's not many parking spaces south of that area, so that will assist some of the people who do work in the area and utilize that lot.
Should we drop this? Mayor, I thought you concerned about the two apartment buildings on seven street, using the seven N. Now, those, those, those apartment buildings actually have their own. The big, the big building in the corner, building. Okay, all right, okay. So they, people, some people there wanted designated parking, segregated parking, whatever you wanna call it. Then we, and we know there's a railroad usage problem, but if we don't separate out and re-sign, it's, it's hard for, uh, the police to enforce, so it's not just one thing we'd be doing, we'd have to do two or three things.
It's kinda all.
Right, and do we, maybe make, just make the number, thirty spots that are employee, how would we, I guess, how would we do that? Go to the restaurants and the supermarkets and stuff and offer them something? I don't know what we do.
I mean, if, if I can make a suggestion on this, uh, and I've mentioned some of these things before. Uh, first of all, I think the permit, uh, questionnaire absolutely makes sense. I think it's something that we should do so we can get an idea of what interest we have from the people who live there. But, but to, to send out the questionnaire without a price makes no sense to me whatsoever. The reason for it is, if I send out this questionnaire and say, well, it's gonna cost you twenty dollars a year, or I send out the questionnaire, it's gonna cost you two hundred and fifty dollars a year, the response that you're gonna receive is gonna be absolutely different. So to send out a questionnaire, get back to responses and say, okay, now, all of you people said you're interested. Now here's what the price is, so now why don't you tell us once you know the price? That doesn't make any sense. The only second thing, and I've mentioned this before, is I had worked with Commissioner Jackson, uh, on the parking lot behind the medical building, at five twenty Frank, and we worked on that for two years. And one of the things that we found, when we changed the parking situation there, there were so many different groups between the people working there, the church, people working at the, um, post office, there were so many different facets of that. And one of the things that we found is, is that sometimes when we did one thing, there was an unintended consequence of another. So the only suggestion I make for my fellow trustees is that if we're gonna follow through with this, which I think is a good idea, I think we should make minimal other changes and then put this in, and then reevaluate, as I did with Commissioner Jackson, once a quarter, to where his offices would have an opportunity in real time to see how things were going, because what Commissioner Jackson used to do is he used to come back on a quarterly basis and he used to say, okay, this is what we're seeing. We need to make this adjustment here. And in some circumstances, we could change the time maybe only by an hour or two hours or something like that. And it was a real tweak, but the way that Commissioner Jackson can give us, get us the best feedback, uh, feedback, is by actually dealing with the situation. So that's the only suggestion that I make, is let's not make, like, five different changes along with the parking. I just think it's just shooting in the dark.
I thought we had agreed for three hundred dollar fee.
No, we hadn't agreed on a price yet.
We had, we talked all, different numbers.
Yes. Sorry. I thought we had agreed on three hundred.
Now's the time, do, do we want to put a fee on this?
I think, I agree, makes sense. We should, I think, uh, uh, I, I'm in favor of doing whatever we are charging. There, there's already an established price to a parking spot, if we have it for the, um, for the train. I'd just say we fix it to that, so that it's fair and...
I, 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 just my opinion, I, I don't agree. Because I think this is a parking spot that is being, gonna be used potentially three hundred sixty-five days, fifty-two weeks out of the year. So to me, um, like I said, I, I, I think that you have to look at it, and again, I don't know what the interest is or whatever, but if we wanna pick two hundred and fifty or three hundred dollars anywhere in that area, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I think that's how much it is, isn't it, two, three, four?
No.
For the guests?
No.
No, I'm not talking about the resident train or...
No, no, that's not, not...
On a resident, it's about four, one hundred, right, and we'll...
So let's, that'd be, let's, one, two, five.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm gonna take a two seventy-five.
I'll take two seventy-five, yeah.
Again, it was less than a dollar a day.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's, it's a, it's still a, I think, a very reasonable price.
Very reasonable.
Uh, I, I think the issue is, we, we need to make sure that the change that we make to box point, you know, is acceptable to get, and that we can really, this isn't just purely a, let's get parking, dedicate parking for, uh, sixty-seven Hilton. It's also to really clean up that lot from the commuters, really suppressing the entire lot, I mean, entire, uh, population using the lot, so.
And the way it's set up, it's impossible for him to do enforcement.
Yeah, I think, so as long as we're sure that we're, we're gonna satisfy, you know, we're killing a lot of, or, we're promoting a lot of good ideas there, you know, positively. Uh, you know, I think people get what they want from that, they can have dedicated parking, and then we can also zero in, uh, on the commuter sewer from downtown or by the housing lot, our non-resident, uh, spots. I'm in favor, I mean, two seventy-five, I can live with, I can, again, as long as, I mean, it's under a dollar a day, I think that's fair. I don't know for auction. I would just stop at two seventy-five and...
Less than a dollar a day.
I'm good, any survey, do you?
Good.
Oh, you know, uh, that would work, uh, and I also, uh, Mr. Paul would have a suggestion that when we start small, uh, against the building, I think that's a good idea. I, I went out there with Joe, I spoke with Alfred Sensory about this. Uh, we can start as, as we, if it gets approved, as we get the permit spaces, we can start against the building and then move out, so, uh, we, I think we have a game plan on that also.
Great. Yeah, I, I, I agree. I think with, with trustee Foley, I think three hundred probably isn't, you know, a proper amount. It's still a, uh, I think it's around, I think starting point, I think we need to start somewhere, uh, to get a sense of what the remaining will be. Uh, again, if we see what happens with the, with the non-resident, you know, voting sell out very quickly, uh, and I think we just need to just start somewhere, and then we reset next year.
I agree with three hundred.
I would still stay in at two seventy-five.
Let me just write something, please. Um, in the area, Commissioner Jackson, in the area where people are violating, you know, not going on the streets and so forth, there's parking laws all day, if we're already doing these things, wouldn't it make sense to change a permit wording in that area to hours that they just couldn't be getting to New York and back again? Just test it out. And if, I know that one of the ladies explained to me that she goes out to New York on Monday, she's back home midday, she cannot find parking spot, okay? What if we just change the wording on a cluster of those, a group of those two eighty spots in Hilton that have eight, assigned to eight hours? Right? Or, or just whatever the wording on that is, it prevents them to go into New York, do a day's work, and come back. Right? Why don't we change the wording on some of that and see if it kills enough of those, dissuades enough of those people from parking there anymore, and then we wouldn't have to do permits or anything else?
Other problem.
Well, wait, everything about this problem has an alter ego. You, you, you saw it on something and it appears to you that this is a good idea, this is a good way to go, and then some other problem pops out on the other side. If we just tried that, we wouldn't have to, uh, get, uh, make people get paid for, for toilet nets. It would, could be that she would drive home from work midday, and there would be a whole major spot because we changed the wording on the middle section where it allows them to stay in New York for full day and then home. Is that, is that making any sense? What do you think of that?
Okay, Mayor, we actually looked at something like that. We thought that, you know, was a viable point, uh, so we did some studies. The problem we're concerned is that a lot of residents will be can't take it. That's, that is the issue, because they need to pass through it too. And we did a study on three different days, and actually on the third day, there was actually more residents in violation, probably in our zone, than non-residents. So that was our concern. We didn't wanna really, uh, throw the residents in the net.
And I, I think also is why, what, we're also subsidizing, we're giving people free parking at village cost, the cost of everybody else. If I have a driveway, I pay for my driveway, I pay for my parking. We are offering people in apartments, subsidizing the apartments. That's what we're doing. I don't think that's right. So I think people should, if they're gonna use a public parking lot as basically their driveway, they should pay something for it.
And the other reason that you recanted that, uh, trustee Trupe, is because you have many people who live in Hilton who commute to the city. So the problem that you have is that if you made a significant portion of the parking spot six hours, they go to work. They don't have an opportunity to come home to move their car within six hours. So what happens is that that basically defeats the entire purpose of having it. So the reason that permits make the most sense is that for people who sit there, who live in the apartment, who don't have parking the way that other apartments do in part of the city, this way it gives them an opportunity to have a spot where they can put their car. And once we, and this, again, as we discussed this before, move all those people who live in there, move all their cars out of the lot to those spots, what then happens is that it then gives the commissioner the opportunity to then change and alter the other time zones to deal with the people who are coming in outside of the city and sitting and parking there, and then just catching up the train. So you have, but you have to have both in order to do that. So that's, that's the reason why you have to have a permit.
Uh, so we have one, two, three, at least three, like, three hundred.
I think, I, uh, similar to the pool, I think that three hundred is like a, could be a threshold that even just several, like, two seventy-five is fine. This is supposed to be a pile. Look, if, you know, if we get, uh, you know, um...
Do you get fifty requests and we'll...
Yeah, you know, then, then we go, okay, maybe we have some room, and then there'll be some room to, to, you know, to increase. Let's not try to, you know, try to kill anybody, so. Doing not the three hundred is that terrible.
Can, can we relook it?
Two ninety-eight, nine, nine, eight. I mean, you know, for us to be arguing about three hundred, just let's do two seventy-five and, quite frankly, let's take a look and, and do it.
I'll, I'll go, I'll go along with two seventy-five, as long as we can look at it to raise it if necessary.
Sure, I, I think that's, I think that's, yeah, trustee, uh, Ralph. I think, look, I, I, I think we should just, we're, we're in like that, you know, there's so much discussion, we're just stalling out. Let's just, let's just try it out, let's do it. Let's do two seventy-five, see what happens. If we get a hundred and fifty space requests, I think, yeah, we can, we've got room to, to bring it up. Uh, right now, let's see.
Let's test it, we tested it two seventy-five, we're standing to test, subject to the increase.
We did, we talked about this as a pilot, so.
Is this going to be a pilot, and so what is the time to reach?
Oh, you basically. Tough to do it, it's tough to do it less than a year.
Well, then, if they buy a permit, they have a permit for a year. So what happened is you basically will run it for a year, and, and now that too. But then if you have an idea of communication, like for example, we originally were talking twenty spots. If you had seventy people say, listen, I'm interested, then we might sit there and say, okay, I don't know if they would do seventy, maybe we could increase it to thirty or something else. But again, whatever we do has to be done in such a way to where you can, you can make some, you can make some sort of, and again, gives Commissioner Jackson the opportunity to do the rest of the work he has to do on the parking. So, but we just don't know what response we get, so I think we react based on what response we get.
Two seventy-five, go on, go on.
I still think three hundred. I mean, again, I think, like, like, one of those prices that we set, we have no idea, and we wind up going in and realizing we're on the shoot.
Well, it's a pilot, we don't know, because the other thing about it too, the thing that you're changing is, is that, again, it's not only the permit spots, it's also the rest of the lot.
All right, I get it.
So the thing of it is, is that, like I said, we have no idea what the demand is, and we have no idea what the ripple effect of what we're doing is. So the two seventy-five, the permit, the only thing for them, uh, sixty-seven.
Yes, that's it.
Here, only for them, not anybody else. No, they have, they have to approve it with it.
Just a little for clarification, this is a survey for interest, and, and then I guess, I don't know, we just, do permits start October first?
Yes.
Permits start October first, so, but then I think you need board resolution, and I'm not sure if you need other.
Well, like the Commissioner, I'm just willing to clarify, are you saying that the survey should test the market, saying, would you buy a permit if it was two seventy-five?
Yes.
We're not setting a fee of two seventy-five. We're doing a survey to find out if it's. Then, then that can be a simple direction of staff.
If that's the case, why don't we just put three hundred in the census? We can always send it at two seventy-five where we, where we.
We can hold on to two seventy-five.
We already have four more to two seventy-five.
So I think you guys might.
Who wants two seventy-fives? Raise your hand, please. We're at, we're at two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five is good.
We'll just be worried this, initial fee, two seventy-five.
Initial fee may be two seventy-five.
Initial annual fees.
At two seventy-five.
Okay, let's, uh, move on.
The minute it should reflect that the mayor has directed staff to prove, to produce the survey at two seventy-five. Thank you.
Two seventy-five, period, not two, period, that's seven five. Okay? Open this up, do anybody have any questions or comments and things in general? I guess you do. I do.
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, I received the final approval from the Department of Health for the water tank project, for the air mon, air quality monitoring. Shortly after that, I received a call from Global Tanks, the company who was awarded the bid to do the job.
Tell us that they don't have business here.
They, no, they're subcontracting, no. No, they are, they are mobilizing and are scheduling demolition to start the week of April eighth.
Are we selling pieces for a dollar a foot?
If, if you'd like to.
Actually, one, one, just to be serious though, are we recycling, are we selling it for scrap? Will we?
Um, they're taking, they're, they're taking it. It's, it's.
Uh, anyone with any comments or questions?
Is there any general questions?
Yeah, yeah, sure, anything, any topic.
Any topic.
Preferably release the guard city, but. Yeah, throw it out there, we'll wing it.
I'm Maureen Leamy, I'm twenty-four West Burrow Road. Hi, um, bringing up the topic of that National Grid. Uh, this past weekend, I got a six-page letter in my mailbox, very alarming, that National Grid insinuated that they're not giving honest information about what their plans are over my block, Weatherford, it's Weatherford. Um, a few months ago, the one city that just had a lot of trouble with that gas lines, and it was on the eastern side of the village, um, it was about five blocks. So I thought that they were replacing all the pipe locks, which is very important. But this letter insinuated that that may not be the case, it may be a main line to help, you know, to go through, maybe to other town, to upgrade their gas system. So, um, it's very, you know, it's very upsetting, and.
Well, can we, can we tell you what's going on? The, we've been in negotiations with National Grid since September. September, it, National Grid is running a transmission line from the North Shore to its plant on Stewart Avenue. They made a presentation to this board on December the fifth. Their route would take it down, transfer to Weatherford and down Weatherford. We have been trying to negotiate with them, and Mr. Swazi sent a letter to National Grid yesterday. And I'll just paraphrase a part of it. Uh, he says that on behalf of the board of trustees, he's writing to inform, strongly opposes any aspect of the current National Grid, project, which provides replacement of the sixty-four, twenty-four inch gas transmission main. Uh, the board requests National Grid to return to its original chosen path down Washington Avenue, from Old Country Road to Stewart, or to design an alternate route west of Washington Avenue that incorporates a path through the commercial district of the village. In addition, the Minister Swazi went on to say, the village will not allow any permits to be issued for the ex, for the evacu, excavation, sorry. Excavation in our residential area related to the National Grid Northwest Nasso Rehabilitation Project. The village is opening to review alternate routes within the village. At the December five meeting, trustee Hyer and I, as well as other trustees, requested National Grid to consider going down Washington Avenue, the west side of Washington Avenue, which is the airport complex, as well as the parking lots. We also suggested that they go the block over, which is Supreme, not Supreme Court, right, County Seat Drive, or, or, or. So we are still in negotiations with them. However, let me also point out, and I'll ask, Village Council be in comment. Unfortunately, the way, what we think right now, the way the law, the transmission line is distinguished from a distribution line, we may have some concerns about being able to stop them if they want to continue to be unreasonable. We will do everything in our power as the trustees and as the village to stop National Grid from going through the major residential area of this village. So I think that kind of brings you up to Davis, the way we stand. I would be very careful about any rumors that you hear or anything else. If you have any concerns, please call the village staff, either the Minister Swazi, Mr. De Francisco, who's our partner in Public Works. So right now, National Grid, we believe, is in the holding pattern. And I'll ask, uh, Village Council be, if he has any further comments.
Jim thinks.
I concur. I concur.
Yeah, you may help also, you should, I mean joking, what's this line, how deep is it?
And also, the, the, the transmission line is not going to be hooked into people's houses.
Yeah, yeah.
No, I appreciate, I didn't know if this was all going on behind the scenes, I just found it, all of this information on Sunday, so.
I was going to ask, do we have a copy of what they, they're giving people's?
No, that's actually, I, I think the letter that you got was from Mr. Lee, was it not?
Yeah, it was a letter from a resident.
A resident, a resident of Lefferts Row, one oh, one oh one Lefferts Row. Um, was handing out or distributing letters to a number of residents. He stopped by my house, I had a home conversation with him on Monday, uh, Sunday, I followed up with a telephone conversation with him on Monday. So this is information, and he has a lot of information, which the copy of which I gave to Mr. Swazi, and we gave it to, uh, Mr. De Francisco.
Because some on, on Facebook, I think they, someone posted the YouTube of the meeting from December. And, um, so it would be worth for you to watch it. I think it's a terrible idea to put.
Well, I mean, it's, it's sold in June, so I was concerned, and.
Yeah.
So this is, just like we're up to date, this, when this started originally, Mr. De Francisco met with the entire National Grid team, um, I wasn't able to stay at that meeting, but Mr. De Francisco phoned me and he called him back and told me it was a good idea. The original route was down Washington, but because of the extensive utility congestion in the area and current laws and spaces between utilities, they redirected to the west for the Mont section, to the east. Um, we've had multiple meetings with them, the board was updated, as I stated, um, and we've been trying to resist this. We don't know where we stand in the eyes of the Public Service Commission laws. We, I issued a memo to my engineering department, Mr. Francisco, on Tuesday, saying no permits at all of issue National Grid in Mont section for any reason except emergency, like replacing a house line. Uh, other areas, they, and the community, they aren't able to continue. A may request came in today for a two-inch main on Fair Court, this is a part of the area, and I said no to it. I said, let them call us back. So we've stopped all permits in that area. The letter that the trustees directed to send, not only by certified mail, regular mail, that was scanned in and sent to our liaison, and he bounced up today, you know, we've been warning them this is coming, because we, we never thought it was going to happen. We do, we also, Mr. De Francisco actually, what we learned in parameters of their cost, and they included, we came up with three or four alternatives ourselves to go the other direction, and they, they knocked them down, but we didn't think the answers were robust enough for us. But nonetheless, we, we're dancing with this legal question.
Ralph, one thing I wanted to ask, we, we had pressed them about going through the parking lots, and he had some lame excuse.
There were.
Yeah, well, cost is like, you know.
They throw three facts at us, the, one thing is cost, but the route that Mr. Francisco had measured out, we, all but one of the linear footers were within their constraints.
Yeah, I, I tasked the engineering department, we find alternate routes that are the same linear feet of the existing.
We should just keep pushing.
Those are the areas, and they did that.
The other one was the one.
We should just keep pushing there, there's no reason to put twenty-four inch gas main, that, that's just a, basically a pass through.
The other one was.
For national neighborhoods, there's no reason.
The second reason, size, cost, many footage, was the, they want to go through a public right of way. Um, so we actually talked to the railroad.
Do they think they're going to get sympathy on the cost issue? I just wanted to, you know, like, who feels bad for the gas company? You know what I mean? It's like, gas company's great.
But the, uh, they, they, we, they want to go through a public right of way, and, you know, people know all parking lines, it's all by the municipality, they didn't like that route. And then the third way was talk to the railroad, and the railroad has a right of way, um, before a parking lot, which is almost identical to Washington.
Right down.
It's a little bit right on the street.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, they want concrete or asphalt on top of it. I pointed out to them that their existing main that it's happening to has grass and dirt under it, um, so it's all regulations change. So we've been, we've been pushing back pretty hard, and, and the letter puts it on the record now, and so we are, we don't know where we're going. We, we think it's a public relations battle, it's a legal battle that might not be legal, relations issue is strong enough. We're fighting, we're, we're, we're doing what you, we're watching the situation, but we think it makes sense to push back.
I appreciate it. So if they do plan to go ahead with something, would that mean maybe invite to come here and explain what they are going to do to everyone? Or, you know, we'll, we'll never know.
Yeah, they were here, if, if you're interested, you can go on YouTube, and it's the December fifth, board trustee meeting, and according to Tom Hogan, President of the EPOA, it's an hour and twelve minutes into that meeting, and you can hear their presentation.
So, I mean, what I meant was, if they decide to change it from all the negotiations, could they come and have a question and answer for the public before we start doing it?
That's up to them, we could ask them.
We could ask them, we can't force them.
We can't force them.
Well, thank you so much.
Very well, thank you.
Anyone else, anything to offer, say?
Mr. Mayor, before we adjourn, I just wanted to, um, myself, uh, to thank you for, and your family, for your services, Mayor. Although you and I do not agree on a number of issues. I still want to thank you for, for your service for the village.
Even though all the votes are eight to zero, we're not going to get any.
Well, there's other issues that.
Reach, reach. Don't come to a vote.
But this is your last meeting as mayor, so, um, so be it. Thank you.
You got any, motion to adjourn? Didn't know that was.